Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, September 4th Board of Commissioners meeting. I've asked Commissioner Booker to do the invocation and Mr. Duncan is going to do the pledge. Would you please stand?
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you with thanksgiving in our hearts, thanking you for this day, thanking you, Heavenly Father, for our employees, thanking you, Heavenly Father, for this community, thanking you, Heavenly Father, for our first respondents, for Heavenly Father, that they are always running to war or danger and the rest of us are running away. We ask that you continue to put a hedge of protection around them and their families. And Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless our military that stand opposed near and far to keep us safe. We ask now, Father, that you bless this meeting, that you guide us throughout it. Help us to make the right decisions to glorify you. We ask all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'm going to start the meeting with a proclamation. This is a resolution recognizing the service and retirement of K-9 Roscoe. Whereas Roscoe, a dedicated bloodhound, joined the Glen County Police Department in '22 and was assigned to the K-9 unit. And whereas throughout his distinguished career, Roscoe faithfully served alongside Officer Michael W. Lane, providing invaluable assistance in supporting law enforcement operations, including suspect and endangered person tracking. And whereas Roscoe participated in multiple deployments, contributing to 11 successful apprehensions or fines and many more community demonstrations, and provided immeasurable assistance in protecting the citizens of Glen County. And whereas beyond his official duties, Roscoe served as a trusted ambassador for the Glen County Police Department, fostering goodwill and strengthening the bond between law enforcement and the community. And whereas after two and a half years of loyal service, Roscoe is now retiring to enjoy a well-deserved life of rest and companionship. Now therefore be it resolved that the Glen County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Roscoe for his outstanding service and contributions to the safety and well-being of our community, and further commends Officer Michael W. Lane and the Glen County Police Department for their continued dedication to protecting the citizens of Glen County. In witness hereof, I sent my hand this fourth day of September 2025. Could you bring Roscoe up, please?
(laughter) That's a bone.
That's a bone.
Here is the proclamation.
Does Roscoe want to say anything to the room?
(laughter)
Thank you. Commissioners, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, general business consent agenda for finance.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for general business, with the exception of anything Commissioner would like to call.
Second. All right. Everybody good with the agenda, the consent agendas? All right. A properly motion in second. All in favor? Thank you. You've done finance, too?
Another one in finance.
Okay, no finance. All right. So we'll move to public hearing land use. ZM 25-13850 Myers Hill Road rezoned. A county initiated request to rezone two parcels located off Myers Hill Road and Lakes Drive. Parcels 02-02181 and 02-0201207. Parcel 02-02181, addressed as Myers, 850 Myers Hill Road, is approximately 189 acres. Zone planned development district, ZM-2006-034. The PD proposed to be amended to modify density and residential development type. Parcel 02-01207 is unaddressed and is approximately 82 acres and is zone forest agricultural. Proposed to rezone to a planned development district that will be part of same PD as parcel 02-02181. Laura Ebert and Anna Wheeler, owners. Ms. Leaf?
Good evening, Commissioner. Stephanie Leaf, Planning and Zoning Director. So this is ZM 2513, and there was an application for the same property that came before the board earlier this year that was a denial decision. And then we did have a Commissioner-sponsored rezon, which is what's before you tonight, was sponsored by Commissioner Tossenson to bring this back before the boards. It has gone through the MPC and now before the BOC. So the property is located, there's two different, well currently there's an access point that comes off of Myers Hill, which is, as you can see, kind of outlined in the blue that hits Myers Hill. And then there's also an access to the property off of the Lakes Drive. There's an access easement that comes off of there. So the two properties are with a star. The property on the right-hand side that has a star, it's kind of the brown color, that is currently zone planned development district. It was a PD that was rezoned in the early 2000s, or rezoned a PD in the early 2000s. And then the other property that's shown in green that has a star, that's currently zoned forest agricultural. And as you can see, the surrounding property is primarily forest agricultural as well. And here's a survey of the property. So what their proposal is, that they are interested in doing is 345 total lots. That is what the PD would propose. Their master plan is only showing 344 at the time, but the PD does say 345. This is a reduction from what they had come before you all, before, earlier this year, as well as a reduction of what was presented to the Mainland Planning Commission. So they are proposing 335 of those lots would be 8,000 square foot lots. And then they would have 10 that are half acre in size. The 10 lots, this was a change that occurred at the Mainland Planning Commission. The 10 lots would be half acres. Those would be on what's currently zoned FA, and that's the parcel 02-01207. Everything will be single-family homes. They had their original proposal back in late 2024, did indicate townhouses as well, but this is just single-family dwellings that they're proposing at this time. And then, as I mentioned, the two access points would be off of Myers Hill and Lakes Drive. So this is just an aerial view that does break this down into what would be on each of these parcels. So part of their rezon request is to really merge both of these parcels into one planned development text. So instead of having, you know, two separate parcels, they do have one master plan, so the development would be flowing between one parcel and the other. So that is what this does, is bring this together as a master plan. So the property on the right is the one that's currently zoned PD. The current PD allows for 250 lots, minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, and that is what will remain on the property. So their master plan does show a max of 250 on that parcel. The parcel on the left, that's currently zoned FA, would be 95 lots total, 10 of those would be half acre, and then 85 would be 8,000 square feet. And so this just does break down with what could be on the site now. And I already mentioned that one existing PD parcel would be allowed to have 250 lots currently. So if this was never rezoned, this is what they have been permitted to do since 2006. The second parcel that's currently zoned FA, there is public water on Myers Hill, so that would allow these lots, as long as they're connected to the public water, to go down to half acre lots. An FA, if they're on private water, well and septic, they would have to be one acre lots, but because they could connect to the public water in Myers Hill, there could be a max of 164 half acre lots. Now, there is significant wetlands on the property, so that number would likely go down, but that would be just based off of the acreage that's out there. And there were having some, different concerns have been brought up from members of the public throughout this process. School district capacity, we did send this application to the school district, and the superintendent indicated they do not have any specific concerns or comments at this time, but they are tracking this development as well as others, in terms of whether there would be any, you know, any information that might inform future school zone redistricting. But at this time, they're tracking this and they had no specific comments. Fire emergency services, our fire department has indicated that the capacity is there to serve, you know, to serve this new development. There's also drainage and traffic concerns that have been brought up, and this is the rezon stage, so down the road, they will come before the county for subdivision approval. And we do have a process, through the construction plan process, that we, that our engineers evaluate drainage and traffic, and there would be improvements that would be likely required to mitigate any of that. And then when they first submitted their application back in 2024, they did have over 400 lots that they were proposing, and so it did trigger a state process called Development or Regional Impact. So it did go through that process. They have since, of course, reduced the number down to 345, but they have gone through that process to this date. And the comprehensive plan does show this is southwest Glen, which does have a number of different zoning districts, and what they are proposing is really medium-density to low-density type of development because of the half acre lots and the 8,000 square foot lots. And so it does meet generally what the comp plan would allow for this area. Just some excerpts from the comp plan. And then the planned development text, which was revised after the MPC recommendations, so the PD text that you received in your packet, as well as what's up on the screen, does incorporate the MPC's recommendation, which was that reduction of some lots. And so they do have an exhibit as part of their PD text showing the wetlands, so you can kind of see in sort of turquoise color the number of wetlands that are on the site. And then this is their proposed master plan, and this does, as I mentioned, tie both of those parcels together. So it does show the lots they're proposing. And on the far left-hand side, let's see, on the far left-hand side, that kind of far-left corner is where you will see the 10 acre, not 10 acres, the 10 half acre lots that was part of the MPC recommendation. And we did receive a number of public comments. This was just what was presented to the Mainland Planning Commission at their August 12th meeting. And at that time, there was a petition that was submitted with over 800 signatures, and there were written comments that were submitted, and I know since then, the board has also received additional comments. So the MPC, there was, it was a six O vote, we had one Commissioner absent. They did recommend approval of this application. They did add a condition that they wanted to reduce the lots on that FA tract, as I mentioned, to 85, 8,000 square foot lots. 10 of those would be the half acre lots. And so a total of 24 lots overall is what's being reduced, and the PD text has been amended to reflect that. And so the total is reduced to 345 from 369, which was presented to the MPC. And then these are your possible motions, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And this is a county-sponsored, but Mr. Lemming, Sir Robert Civil Engineering, is here representing the owner this evening if he has any technical questions. Thank you.
Could you put the motions back up for me, please? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone opposed who would like to come up and speak now? If you do, please state your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Reverend Rice.
Up here, sir, please.
I believe your voice would carry, but protocol would call for you to come to the mic, please.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Rice, and I have concerns, and some of those concerns is about the traffic that we will incur once this go into play. I don't know whether or not anyone has really taken a look at it. Currently, it takes me, the site has not even begun to be developed, it still takes me three minutes to get off of Myers Hill Road on the 82. It takes me another additional three more minutes to get off of Bell's cutaway just to get down to Satilla Elementary School. Now, what will it happen once this development come into play? How will we get where we need to be at a pointed place and time, in a timely manner, other than having to start your day out a whole 30 or 45 minutes early just to make it to a destination at eight o'clock? That's one of the concerns that I have right now. The other concern is what the developer is doing to make sure that from the develop that he has to tie in with the network that's already there. I know with this development coming into play, that means more childrens are going to be active, and so what's going to happen to Myers Hill Road? We have a little old park that's there, and our young men and women are enjoying it right now. And I do believe in the future, with this development coming into play, we will have additional children that's there. So is there anything in mind on putting sidewalks and what have you to, from this development to Baldwin's Park already? There is, don't seem like there's any interest in that. And one of the last and most and foremost that's in my mind is that, once the develop has been developed, what, there's so much being taken away from us, but there's not anything being given to us. What I mean by that is this, I don't see anywhere on the development where there's going to be any additional playgrounds or anything for those children that's going to be taking these homes. I know that there's been committees saying that they're going to do what they can to help boost up the school system that's there. We already behind the eight ball when it comes to that already. So what's going to happen when this development finally come into play? And those are the concerns that I have. I know that the police department is going to do their thing, I know everybody, but what have they done to open up the roads and structure that's already in place? It seems like there's no concern being that. One of the main things that I have, and I'm going to take my seat on this, is because even at the junction at Myers Hill and 82, we requested a light to be there, and they said they were going to put a turnaround, having to do something. If it takes me that long just to get out now, what would it take me when I have to do that two, three, or four years from now? Those are some of the concerns that I have as one of the leaders in the community. And also, one way in, one way out, what happens if some emergency has to come into play? Those are some of the things that I think that needs to be addressed. There should be another way of getting into that place and getting out of that place, just to help the flow of traffic. I bid you speed. I thank you for listening to my concern. I hate to leave, but I got a revolver going on.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Gina Piles. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Roscoe. My brother was the Glen County PD for a long time, and Roscoe was a very good part, big part of his life. I only have a couple of things. I grew up out there. I still have property out there. My plan was to move back out there, and I would think that most of the people who moved in that area looked at that area as a countryside, an area where we didn't have a bunch of traffic. It was an area where kids could play, like Reverend Rice talked about, the playground. And we looked at that area as an area peaceful, quiet, not where we have a bunch of traffic coming in and out of that area. And my plan was to move back onto my property and set it up to where my grandkids could come and play, and that road is not a danger to them, Myers Hill Road as I speak of. The only other thing I would like to address is, I understand, and I'm not sure if the fire chief is here, to where he can explain what they meant about enough fire services. Now, I grew up out there, and it looks like to me the same fire service, unless there's something that I've missed. Is there like one fire truck? Maybe they can address, I'm just curious. I want to know, when they say that we have fire services out there, is that fire service that we have, is that going to accommodate the new homes that are being built and the homes that are coming? Because 341 and the what we have on 17, I've been out there and seen fire truck running for one house, and the other house is burning. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm speaking to you again this evening as the spokesperson for the South Glen Community Group. Rumors have been flying all over our community.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Brooke Roberts. Excuse me. Rumors have been flying all over the community about this Myers Hill rezoning. When we talk with neighbors and friends, we get one of two reactions. I thought that was already approved, or wait, I thought the community won that. How's that coming back up again? This is exactly what happens when you give a community whiplash. When meetings get changed, and the only notice you get is a little scribble on a marker pen on a yellow sign on the road, so small you can't read it from your car as you drive by. When only the property line, people who share a property line get a neighbor. And then when the community rallies and the Commissioner side with them, and then six months later, here we are again because someone decided to sponsor it. And when that sponsor is our own district commissioner, it really felt like a slap in the face. Above all, the most eye-opening and disheartening thing with this whole process has been what we has felt as a group, that not only some of our leaders weren't working for us, but in many cases, were actively working against us. At the last planning board meeting, our petition that our little group worked so hard on was openly mocked. A mature person would look at a joke name like Kermit the Frog, realize it's a fake and move on, but instead, it was weaponized to try to discredit hundreds of real signatures and the voices behind them. Who does that to their own citizens? Then we sat there and watched as a board member coached the developer's representative on how to answer answers, answer questions about drainage, even going as far to explaining how drainage works right there from the bench. How is that working for citizens? And then the planning meeting agenda said one number of houses, but then after the public comment was closed, after we weren't allowed to say another word, suddenly, it was
Hi, good evening. I'm speaking to you again this evening on, as the spokesperson for the South Glen Community Group. Rumors have been flying all over our community-
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Brooke Roberts, excuse me. Rumors have been flying all over the community about this Myers Hill rezoning. When we talk with neighbors and friends, we get one of two reactions. "I thought that was already approved," or "Wait, I thought the community won that. How's that coming back up again?" This is exactly what happens when you give a community whiplash. When meetings get changed, and the only notice you get is a little scribble on a marker pen on a yellow sign on the road, so small you can't read it from your car as you drive by. When only the property line people who share a property line get a neighbor. And then when the community rallies, and the commissioner side with them, and then six months later, here we are again because someone decided to sponsor it. And when that sponsor is our own district commissioner, it really felt like a slap in the face. Above all, the most eye-opening and disheartening thing with this whole process has been what we has felt as a group, that not only some of our leaders weren't working for us, but in many cases were actively working against us. At the last planning board meeting, our petition that our little group worked so hard on was openly mocked. A mature person would look at a joke name like Kermit the Frog, realize it's a fake and move on, but instead, it was weaponized to try to discredit hundreds of real signatures and the voices behind them. Who does that to their own citizens? Then we sat there and watched as a board member coached the developer's representative on how to answer answers, answer questions about drainage, even going as far to explaining how drainage works right there from the bench. How is that working for citizens? And then the planning meeting agenda said one number of houses, but then after the public comment was closed, after we weren't allowed to say another word, suddenly, it was revealed that the board and developer had already been talking behind the scenes, and they'd worked out a deal to shave off 24 houses, ones that happened to be the ones that were stuck in the furthest back of the park and the biggest part of the wetland. That was represented as a good faith reduction. It was used as an excuse to push the whole thing through unanimously. You can't tell us with a straight face that the planning board was working on behalf of the citizens and not on the behalf of the developer. Let's also not forget this developer isn't even from Glen County. He's not a voter here. He bought a piece of property that everyone around here knows has huge problems. It has sat vacant and undeveloped for 18 years because of water and drainage issues. Local developers didn't even want to touch it. This land was such a big problem that he scooped it up for less than $1,700 an acre. You can't find land in Glen County anywhere else that's as cheap as that. That tells you alone just how much of a problem it is. Building in an area that's traditionally half-acre lots, which is 21,000 square feet, and shrinking it down to .1 acres is 8,000 square feet, and that's not just a small change in density. Anybody with common sense can tell you that that is a massive deviation. Time and time again, his profit has been placed over our quality of life and above the safety of our kids on our too-little county lane road. And then to add insult to injury, the validity of our community group has been questioned. Your own website says that you want groups to appoint a spokesperson and to avoid repetition. We did exactly that. We've held meetings, knocked on doors, printed newsletters, posted on social media, and yet I have been personally asked by two separate commissioners if the speech that I gave on the behalf of our group at the planning board was written by 100 miles. As if we don't have an original thought in our head, and we don't have our own voices. It honestly has felt a little bit like a smear campaign against your own citizens. As of today, our petition stands at 888 signatures, which we created, hosted, and passed around to neighbors' churches and exit 29 families. We even picked a platform that required zip codes and email addresses to keep it as transparent as possible, so you cannot say you don't know what the community wants. From day one, our message has been crystal clear. It is inappropriate for that forest agriculture parcel to be rezoned into planned development. Everything out here, including the lakes, is zoned forest agriculture. We welcome new neighbors. We want people to move out here to enjoy the same lifestyle that we do. Yards big enough for the kids to play in, privacy, chickens, trees, green space, and for our kids to be able to ride their bikes down to Baldwin Park in safety. This developer has always had the ability to build 250 lots, but he doesn't want to do that. He wants more. He wants to pack them onto teeny-tiny lots that don't fit the character of our community. And you're being asked to let one out-of-town developer who has bought a problematic piece of land on the cheap fix his problems at the expense of hundreds of your constituents. It does not feel like government working for us. We want to welcome new neighbors into our community, not a developer who wants to destroy it. I am asking you again from our community, please vote no on this rezoning request again. Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is George Hernandez. I live at Laurel Grove Plantation, and I want to speak out opposing the development. I was here before at the previous meeting, and I sent you an article that was a study done out of UGA. I'd like to just bring that back up again. I hope that you had an opportunity to look at it. What that study indicated essentially is that when we're looking at monies paid in from property taxes versus services provided, when we look at residential property, residential property consumes more in county services than it pays in in taxes, okay? As opposed to commercial development, which pays more into county taxes than it consumes in services. And when you think about it, it makes perfectly good sense. Residential properties have a 24-hour population. They consume fire service, they consume law enforcement service and others. Commercials, they tend to close down. They have a lot of liability issues going on for them, so they don't develop many of the issues that you see in residential development. So with this in mind, any residential development that is in the county is going, it's just, you know, as a fact of function of what it is, it's going to consume more in services than it's going to pay into in taxes. What we need is a balance. We need a good mix of residential and commercial. It's the only way we can survive without having to pay more money. When I look at this plan, and I know, you know, realistically, a lot of this is going to be about compromise at the end of the day. The developer has got, the developer, I'm sorry, has a permit to develop, what is it, 250 roughly homes right now? He could do that tomorrow. It is clear, I think he's doing whatever the rest of us probably would do. You see a parcel of land that's open and available, you'll try to include that parcel of land, you'll try to increase your profits. I can't fault him too much for that. Where I've got some criticisms, though, is how it affects the entire community. And I may need the police department to escort me outside when this is over, but I want to give you a couple of proposals. Number one is deny out of hand, and keep denying on developing the additional property until perhaps it could be acquired by the county as a county park. That would certainly benefit the people who are going to be the new residents. The better idea that I want to relate to you is, I look at that access off of Myers Mill, I look at the fact that we've got two divisions of property here, one going to the left and one going to the right. You know, the area where we're at in South Glen, it would not hurt if there was some more commercial in that area. I look at that property, I see retail space, I see a grocery store, a gas station, a couple of restaurants, essential services that the local community can use. What that'll do, it'll do a couple of things. One thing that it will do is, again, because commercial pays more into the county coffers than it takes out in services, it's going to help to mitigate down the loss that we're going to have from all the residential development. That's the first thing it'll do. The second thing it's going to do is it's going to take cars off of the road. You won't see as many people around out on the main drives because they'll go to that parcel for their groceries, their gas, their restaurants. Okay, that just works. You could even, from the new development, you can even walk it. What I would suggest is deny that as well. Let the builder come back with a plan, a good plan, a reasonable plan that looks more like the wonderful construction that they do commercial at Hilton Head than it does like we've seen in some other areas where this can be developed into tasteful businesses that'll serve the community, it'll keep people off the roads, it'll improve their quality of life, and it'll hopefully cut down on the issues and problems with that area. And if I could, could I just ask for a straw poll, a show of hands? Anybody could be willing to entertain the idea of that extra partial being done commercial? Nobody at all? Okay.
Sir, sir.
All right. Okay, I think the people have spoken. Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Paul Oglesby. Live on Myers Hill Road. I have Oglesby Family Farm. We have about five different schools this year come out. On field trips, a lot of them for St. Simon's Island. Adam Wainwright brought his private school out. Professional golfers come out. We entertain about four, 5,000 people every year. Not all at one time, but during the season. And so we have a pretty good footprint in Glen County. And I was a part-time developer at one time with Ricky Oakwin. He's my cousin. You may know him, Mr. Chair. There's two gentlemen sitting back here that's premium house builders, Sean and Chris Wilson. And I forgot one thing. I had told one commissioner, now I'm going to try not to call anybody's name, when I say you, that's everybody, when I say y'all, that's everybody, and it may be the Glen County Government. But with that said, Sammy, I'm just joking. I owe you an apology, Mr. Neal, for something I thought you had said that was wrong in one of the meetings. I won't go in depth with that because I don't want you to take away from my minutes. And then I may take back the apology before the end of the meeting anyhow. So anyhow, with that said, I've done what I said I would do. And the problem with this, and I have text, Mr. Steve, I can show you some text, I've talked with him and text with him. I consider him a fairly good man. He's a farmer. We relate to one another. And I can understand he wants to put a house on every inch of this property. That's what farmers do. When I first planted blueberries, I wanted to plant them in the flower beds because it was income. But you have to separate that. You have to separate that mentality. You cannot be a farmer and be a developer. It doesn't work. In the second parcel of the FA land, I, in my personal belief, and I told Mr. Steve this, and he thanked me for it, and I can show you on my phone where he thanked me for it, that if he was to do half-acre lots, leave out the 8,000-square-foot lots on the FA land, it would hep out a bunch in our situation. You have to compromise. We had felt like we'd been run over by the Glen County Government. And it started with the first meeting. The chair of the board stopped the meeting and said, "Well, how many lots would it take for you to make a profit? What kind of question is that? When you have all these..." Now, we had the courthouse full then. Now, what kind of question is that? He awarded him two more lots than what he originally wanted. It took the engineer a little bit to figure out how many lots it would take to make a profit. Now, is it Glen County's responsibility for every developer coming in here to make a profit? If it is, put me on the next project because I'd like to make a little money. I don't think it is. To raise a child, now we've been, the Kermit the Frog, he's going to own that name. He is running his political career in Glen County. He's going to own that name. But it didn't bother me because I knew, I know this person, I know him. But I looked at the comments, not the amount of people that signed this petition, I looked at the comments, because I wanted to see what people were feeling, not just them signing a petition, I wanted their feelings. There's one lady said, and I quote, and you could look it up. She said, "Who would raise two kids on one-eighth of an acre lot? With 23 acres of retention pond, it must be a swamp." Now that hit home with me. I know I'm fixing to run out of time.
You're at 5 minutes, 30 seconds. You're using somebody else's time now.
I can have your time? Okay. All right, would you come up right quick, Terry? I'm going to show you what this plan calls for. All right, this is, this is 14 feet right here. All right, you looking at a bedroom window, and you looking at a bedroom window. And there's seven-foot grass on each side. When I was coming up playing in the yard, I had a curveball that broke seven foot. I'd be forevermore breaking out the neighbor's house. Going back, Terry. This is the front yard. Now, this is where the house on this lot now, y'all. This is the front yard. Mr. Chair, you cannot park your truck in this driveway if you driving that HD 250 setting out there. That thing's 21-foot long. Where's the people going to park? Where's the kids going to play? You take the kids out of the yard and put them in the house, who's going to fight our future wars? And it's coming. You think I'm a radical? You wait till China hits our beaches? You going to want a kid that's played in the yard? That builds character when you play in the yard. They say on TV every night, you know, "We got to get the kids out of the house, off the phones, off the computers." The president has even implemented a work program again, a workout program. You got to get the kids out. We can't lose, we can't lose our kids. My daughter lives in Attleford. I called her the other night, asked her about my youngest grandson. She said he's out playing ball, cul-de-sac baseball. I said, "I've never heard of that. What terminology is that? What is cul-de-sac baseball?" She said, "Daddy, we live in a neighborhood, there's 2,500 houses. There's nowhere to play. They gather up, they got six or eight teams in this neighborhood, they gather up in a cul-de-sac to play baseball." Now, think about it. How you going to slide into second base on asphalt? Where's these kids going to play in this neighborhood? It's the country. I turned down $2 million for my farm. $2 million from Platinum Real Estate out of Chicago, Illinois, because my grandson's liked to ride a motorcycle or a four-wheeler. It's a shame that y'all going to pass this. And I ask you a question. Would you move into the refuge right now? Would you leave your house, move into the refuge, and raise a family on one-eighth of an acre in the country, in the swamp, in a rural area? Would you do it? Would anybody do it? And if the answer's no, if you vote yes, you doing your constituents a disservice. This man is not creating not one permanent job in this county. We got Put Mill fixing to shut down. I mean, they talking about it. Y'all should be out there giving them tax breaks to keep them here. But yet, we voting on a one-eighth of an acre subdivision. Me and my wife wrote down Good Place the other day. I know you're going to stop me. But I shouldn't apologize to you from the very beginning. You took up some of my minutes. I've done-
I'll give you, you can finish.
We wrote down Good Place the other day when it was raining, and there was swamp water, red swamp water running down the road. There's my wife as a witness. It was that deep in the road down Good Place. If y'all going to use this man's money to run a sewer line, you should run it down 82 instead of running it through the swamp. There's three tracts of land ready to be developed. Let this man pay for it. He's willing to do it. Let him pay for it. Kick the line on fuzz down 82.
All right, I got to call you now.
All right.
Let me see, how much time we got left? 10, 21. We got about five minutes left.
I'm not going to be long.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mr. Butler, and I live in the Lake subdivision. I was here the last time, and I just want to be very direct, and I'm going to address y'all, I know he's here. Developers are all over, and we understand that Georgia's the last frontier. A lot of rural land, undeveloped, and people want to come in and buy property and develop it out. We have city property, we have county property, and we have rural property where we live at. I moved out there because of it's a rural area. It's country. The lifestyle is what it promotes. I can live anywhere I want to live. I chose to live out there. You already have permission for the units. That's it. I don't know how it got past me that far because I would have bucked against you then. I want that to be known. I did not move to the rural area for it to be turned into a city area. I have that option already. I can sell my home now and move into the city or into the county. What are we going to do? Turn the country into the city? And that's a legitimate question because all the conversation is about the developer. What about the residents? Everything that you're hearing is people speaking about family. Where are we going to raise our kids? How are we going to do this and do that? Because it's where we live. Not everyone wants to live in a city environment. Not even myself. I came out of a city environment. That's why I chose to live in a rural area. That's the whole purpose of it. That's why there's so much pushback is because people have something to lose and one individual and his company has something to gain. So, the family loses for profitability of one company. I yield my time. You have one minute.
One minute, so I'm going to keep this brief. I'm going to take this one out for a start. My name is Paul Roberts. I live on Myers Hill. Have the property on the top left of that picture that is adjacent on two property lines. Have the single biggest property lines on each one of those parcels up for discussion this evening. Like I said, I just wanted to touch on a couple of points, and I'm going to skip to point three, which is the false narrative that this developer has bent over backwards to negotiate with this community. I'm going to challenge that. It was actually mentioned to me yesterday in a conversation. Like I say, I own land that shows the biggest single property lines of both parcels in question. The developer has not once made a concerted effort to reach out to me. This developer has come in initially with a high number of lots, over 400-plus townhomes. Then, when the project did meet a lot of community pushback, almost immediately dropped the townhomes and some of the lots. Then, at the Commissioner's sponsored reaplication, when he met more pushback, and in the dying minutes of the most recent planning board meeting, after the public comment period, I might add, he came off a few more lots to try and get across the fence line. Now, we are consistently hearing, "Well, he has negotiated down for the community." Really? Seems to me that if you approve this rezone this evening, that he still gets exactly what he wants. Tiny lot sizes. The FA parcel rezoned to PD and a financially viable project at a number that I suspect was the actual target all along. In any negotiation, you set your price higher than you're willing to accept. And if it approved, that is exactly the scenario that has happened here this evening. The only people who have actually who actually have any tangible sacrifice in this alleged negotiation are the residents who are now going to be impacted forever while the developer makes his money, walks away, and gets to say, "What a great negotiation we all had." Sure doesn't add up to me. And finally, if I have a couple of seconds. Commissioner Rofolsky?
I've let you run over. Go ahead.
Finally, a question. If our Commissioner changes his mind again after his vote this evening, after, as he did after his negative vote in January, does he have the power to bring this and all of us back before the Board again in six months? Or does that rule only apply when it's in favor of the applicant? Thank you for your time.
All right, I'm going to close that portion. And now, I'm going to ask if anybody would like to come up that is in favor.
Good evening. Jake Lemmings with Robert's Civil Engineering. I'm representing the owner of the property. First, I want to, and I'll get to answer some of these questions as well. But just wanted to talk about, first, where we've started and kind of where we are now. As was kind of discussed, you know, we had to go through the DRI process because we were over 400 lots originally. So, the first layout, it had a mixture of townhomes and single-family. It was 361 single-family lots. There were 7,000 square foot lots. And then, there were around 98 or so townhomes that totaled around 459 total units. When we went to the Mainland Planning Commission, and actually after we had a meeting with the HOA there with the lakes, you know, the townhomes were positioned on the FA parcel. So, if you can see the cursor here, they were all positioned back here. So, we're talking with the lakes and the HOA there. They were in opposition of the townhomes because of the proximity and the single-family. So, the developer and obviously with the Mainland Planning Commission was kind of in favor of that, removing and focusing more on single-family. Now, like has been spoken, this is zoned right now for 250 single-family lots. He could go out there and start constructing that, you know, tomorrow. We're really only looking at this FA parcel here and bringing this in. And so, the ask here, as Stephanie said, is 95 total lots with a mixture of 8,000 square foot lots and half-acre lots, which meets the comprehensive plan for the low to medium-density housing. One thing, too, that I wanted to speak to is the access points. So, I think there's some confusion on access just from hearing some of the comments. So, the access point, the main access point, is not going to be on Myers Hill Road. This is a secondary access point. The main access point is going to be on Lakes Drive. We don't see people coming from town, going up to Myers Hill, then traveling back down Myers Hill to come into the development. Ultimately, you know, this project is going to be a phased project. It's not going to be something you're going to see, you know, construction of all of these lots all at one time. It's going to likely be four to five phases mixed in over a number of years. Ultimately, a secondary access point is required by the Glen County ordinance whenever you reach a certain threshold of lots. Just this 250 alone requires a primary and a secondary access point. Which is why, you know, this access has been there all along. But just to reiterate, the primary access point is going to be, the main entrance is going to be here off of Lakes, off of coming out of the Lakes. And then, this would be a secondary access point coming off Myers Hill. Drainage, I want to speak to that. So, obviously, at the zoning phase, we're not required by the Glen County ordinance to go in and do a drainage analysis on the property. But we're talking with the lakes and and obviously understanding what's going on on this property, walking the site, looking at everything. The owner wanted to go ahead and do a drainage analysis on the site. And as you can see, the ponds that are proposed on this development. Now, this, as the community probably saw, this is not the master plan that is in the packet. The one within the packet actually shows the... You know, we... What showed... Because this one, Stephanie, this is the... That's still the 8,000 square foot showing there, it looks like. Is there another one on here? But this, this looks to be the... Yeah, this is the one showing the all 8,000 square foot. The one that's in the packet, it actually has 10 half-acre lots back here, which removed the 24 additional 8,000 square foot lots. But that's not the only lots. I know a comment was that the lots that were moved were only the ones in the very back. That's actually not the case. In the new concept, you'll see that we understood with this homeowner here, the, just the goal to have a buffer, additional buffer off of property lines. And we tried to do that with the lakes. As you can see here, this is the only property within the lakes that actually backed up to two residential lots. So, Mr. Ebert removed those two lots and is showing this as a park area, which is something that I heard that was spoke of, that was desired for the community along with, you know, different amenity areas on the site. But those lots were removed for this person here specifically at the lakes. And as you see probably in your packet, there were six or so homes here that butt up to the Robert's property that have been removed from the master plan as a part of this. Just out of respect for... Mr. Ebert wanted to remove those out of respect for what is being asked here. And so, that happened as the lots that were struck through as well. So, those were removed, and you'll see that in the packet. But with the drainage, getting back to the drainage. So, ultimately, we've evaluated the drainage on the site. We understand the runoff that's coming from the lakes. We understand the issues the lakes are facing with drainage. We took all of that into consideration. These ponds are actually overdesigned to be able to handle the runoff from the lakes that's routed through the development. Because obviously, when we're doing our pre- and post-drainage calculations, we don't just take in consideration the amount of flow that's on the site. We're taking into consideration all the flow that's coming into the site as well. So, making sure we're not trapping any water, causing any flooding. So, these ponds are actually overdesigned. And we feel, based on our calculations and what we've seen and the overdesign of these ponds, that this is actually going to improve the drainage situation, not only in this area, but specifically for the lakes. So, we see this as an improvement to the overall drainage plan here in this area that can relieve some of the existing drainage concerns and issues that they're facing now. Utility access. So, that's something that's been brought up as well. Obviously, there's a water main that's been discussed on Myers Hill Road. It's an existing 12-inch water main. The development will tie into that existing 12-inch water main and be routed back through this area to serve the development. Now, sewer is not coming down Myers Hill Road. So, just wanted to be clear that anyone that was concerned about, you know, sewer being routed down Myers Hill and ultimately making joint water and sewer, making folks connect to that sewer, it's not coming down Myers Hill. So, there won't be any reason to fear future connection to that because ultimately, the sewer is being routed up Live Oak Lane off of Buck Swamp. Joint Water and Sewer has an existing 12-inch forest main on Buck Swamp that needs additional flow. It's lacking lacking flow now, so they're trying to get more flow to go to it. So, ultimately, that forest main will route up through Live Oak Lane to the development and then route through the development, and we'll have a lift station on site for that. But it's not going to extend back up Myers Hill as a part of this project. Let's see. All right. Last thing I want to speak to is buffers. And then, I'll get into some of the questions that was brought up. So, it's hard to tell from this plan, but this is a 300-scale plan sheet. And what that means is in this bottom right-hand corner, from where the cursor is over to the middle of this, just ultimately this area I'm pointing to here, that's 300 feet. So, the lots that were removed here from this property line to the right-of-way of the proposed right-of-way, that's at least 100... That actually is 100 foot exactly there. So, the location from the two closest homes on Myers Hill are on this parcel here that I'm pointing to off of Longleaf Drive. I measured it today. From the edge of the roof to the property line, get the cursor working. So, from the edge of the roof here to the property line is 800 feet. And then, there's also the additional area, wooded area on site that we're not impacting in this area due to the wet one. So, there's significant buffers from the site or around the site. Obviously, there's upland area here. We're not getting over there to impact anything there. Like I said, we've removed these lots to have the additional buffer there. And then, from the home on this property measuring over to the edge of the property line there, from the home to the property line is around 794 feet. So, there's significant buffer there as well. Now, one thing I wanted to also point out is that from Myers Hill Road, the right-of-way, and this is just so everybody can understand the scale and how far off of Myers Hill this actually is. From Myers Hill Road down to the back of this first lot here is 1,400 feet. So, this development is going to be significantly off of Myers Hill. You're not even really going to be able to see the development from Myers Hill for all the dense vegetation in here unless obviously these other property owners started cutting down trees, and obviously, we're leaving all this buffer. So, there's significant buffer from Myers Hill. Now, if I can get into some of the questions that was brought up, if I have time there.
Yeah, I'm just... I'm letting you present.
Okay. All right. So, I wanted to get into some of the questions that was brought up. So, ultimately, the first thing is traffic. So, speaking to the traffic flow in this area, as I said, there's two access points. So, one, I think there was some confusion when that was being brought up, and he was speaking to one access point off, coming up Myers Hill and being routed through. That's not the case. Like I said, this is the main access point here. It's the closest point of connection to 82. And we view that as the main access, and it'll be proposed as the main access point. And like I said, this is going to end up being a secondary access when the time comes and we hit the lot threshold within the, you know, third phase, whenever that phase would be of this project. So, traffic concerns. So, Stephanie briefly spoke to this, but ultimately, we're in the zoning phase right now. On a development this size, typically, whenever you get to the preliminary plating phase, and then there's the next phase would be if this gets approved, the preliminary plating phase, and then a, the civil plan phase, that we'd submit the civil plans, the drainage report, everything that's required to Glen County. It would be put on the portal. It's actually public information, so anybody could go in and see it when the plans are uploaded. But ultimately, at that point, the county engineer will have... Will review the site and see if it meets the threshold to require a traffic study. Any improvements that are necessary due to this development as a... That comes back within the traffic study would be on the developer. So, if there are any improvements necessary on Myers Hill Road or intersection improvements, that would be on the developer as a part of this project. We're just not to that phase yet. Sidewalks were brought up. So, typically, what you see within the developments is kind of up to the, I guess, the developer and what he wants to do. I'm not sure on the sidewalks and interconnectivity. But ultimately, you know, the county pushes to extend sidewalks, at least to right-of-way. We're not going to be extending sidewalks down Myers Hill Road. That's not within the scope of this project. It's not on the developer. We can extend to a certain point within the property limits. And then, it's on the county to take, you know, a project from there and say, "Get that to the park" if that would be a desire for the community and a desire for the county. Amenities, we show amenities on site. You know, we're at the master plan conceptual phase right now, so we'll get more into the fine details of what amenities are shown later, but ultimately, there's a park area, dog park, playground potentially, pool, clubhouse, typical amenities that you would see within a development. One thing that was brought up is what is the owner doing to help the community? I disagree with some of the folks and what they said. I've been a part of a lot of the meetings with the owner. He has reached out to try to do all he can to ultimately... It's not to make a profit. It's literally to make it work for him. I don't know his bottom-line numbers, but he's obviously shaved off a lot, and the big cost driver is extending the sewer, public infrastructure, all the way to this development to, you know, potentially help joint water and sewer get further up 82. So, that's kind of a driving factor is that infrastructure cost. The fire service, Stephanie, I'll let you speak to that and reiterate that. But from my understanding, during the DRI process, the fire had a chance to look at this. And it can... The fire does have adequate service to be able to provide to this future development. One thing that was brought up is the FA and kind of what's allowed within the FA. Obviously, like we spoke about, is the Comprehensive Agreement Plan. You know, the Comprehensive Agreement Plan states low to medium-density housing. That's what we're proposing here. So, for future growth and as the county grows and kind of what we're seeing in the trend, it's calling for actually smaller lots than what's proposed here. A lot of folks are wanting like a 50-foot wide lot, a 60-foot wide lot. This is actually bigger than that. I think a lot of it has to do with infrastructure cost, and I understand about the yard size, and I grew up that way too. But being a younger, you know, it's one of the things, it's not... I think a lot of people would enjoy having just owning a home versus renting a home. So, I think it's kind of different points of view and kind of, just kind of speaking to that there. Obviously, we've kind of hit the residential versus commercial. I don't think, you know, residential, it doesn't match the comp plan. And I don't think it's ideal in this situation with the residential around. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, anybody have questions?
I have one. Jake, I'm looking at the site plan, master plan, that's in the packet. And I'll draw your attention to the one that's on the screen. In the FA area, kind of at the three o'clock position, there you go. That area there is a little difference in the master plan in the packet.
Right.
And I understand the difference there. But as I look at the master plan in the packet, that area there has a number of lots and there has a demarcation line, setback line. I'm not sure what that is. Are you familiar with that part? And is, are those, how are those going to be addressed in terms of, in the wetland area?
So as she's pulling that up, I can speak to that. So the environmental consultant has ruled that wetland as a non-jurisdictional, isolated wetland. So as a part of that, you can go in and fill that without
Okay.
any issue.
Got it, thank you.
But also, there will be, you know, a pond there as well as what we're proposing, but it is an isolated, non-jurisdictional wetland.
That clarifies it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other question?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What, do you have any idea what the lots will cost?
I don't, no, sir. I haven't ran any, I know that was brought up that I ran the numbers, but I didn't run those numbers. The owner's been running those.
I got a question. How many phases are y'all looking at?
Looking at four to five phases.
Four to five phases, timeline?
It's hard to say. It kind of depends on how many homes they take down at a certain time. I mean, you usually see, you know, 50 to 60 homes potentially taken down at a time. I don't know, but I know I think it's going to at least be, you know, we're, if we started right now on the design plans, we probably won't have permit ready, everything ready to go in seven months from now, from actually starting. So I expect sometime within three to five years.
Yeah, and I know from Majestic Oaks, which started in '06, 19 years ago, I think they're just now getting to maybe Phase Two.
Right.
So we're talking years and years and years.
It's years of making, yeah, that's the best case scenario.
Before you would get that.
Right.
My concern is, where Commissioner Duncan, the FA there, those lots in the lakes and that little lake or pond there, where, where's that? This area, and I've been on this lot, I rode four-wheelers on it. And I just, it's hard for me to grasp. And all this water here is literally, you gotta go up toward 82, under 82, literally under Manuel Church, got a railroad track there that's got smaller culverts, and then somehow make it to the Brunswick River. These citizens out here, I'm thinking about them, but I'm looking here and looking at the future citizens that would be buying these lots. And I wouldn't buy one. But that's beside the fact. My concern is, some of these lakes up here that are back up on the lakes, those are going to flood. And the water's either going to go into the future residents or go into the lakes. It's low, it's like a meteor hit this area 2,000 years ago. It's low. I saw a video this week and somebody was literally almost knee-deep in water after this torrential rains. And I'm concerned about the citizens that are here speaking against it, but also the 340 or so future residents will have. And this is just a wetland area. I can appreciate the developer and understand he can build 250 homes, but right now, you know, I just, having gone out there and been on that property, and I imagine Mr. Tossin maybe has, I don't know about the other commissioners, you know, this is going to be a challenge. I don't think this would be phased out in probably 75 to 100 years if none of us will be here when this actually would look like this screen here. And that's one of the things I say to the residents that are here, nothing's going to change tomorrow, next week, probably in three years. And then at that part, it'll be a slow gradual process. The commissioners here, I've spoke to several, I want to see sidewalks on Myers Hill Road. Not just for this development, if it's passed, but for the citizens that are already out there. Me and Commissioner Tossin have talked for three years about sidewalks in District One. There's none out there, none. There's none on Myers Hill, Emmanuel Church, Fish Off, Baumgardner, you name it. Every road out there has been overlooked for years. But I got off sidetrack, but I'm curious about when these lakes fill up, the impact on the citizens that are in those lots there? Or is that water going to go into the lakes where I always get calls, every time we have a, every time it thunders, I get calls from people in the lakes from flooding issues. And it's just, you know, I was against this before and, you know, I'm going to be against it tonight. But I understand, my worry is for the future residents coming and understanding that you and the developer understand what a monumental task to develop that and get that. And that's what I wanted, citizens are here tonight, that this is, folks, this is going to take 45, 50, 60 years for this to all come to fruition if it did. And just don't lose no sleep over it. But it's a concern with the water impact on the residents that are out here, residents that live in the lakes and the residents that will eventually call this home. Very concerning, very concerning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I may speak to one thing, so
Yes, sir.
I completely understand, you know, the issues that are faced with the lakes. I went out there and looked at it as well whenever we were completing the analysis. That's one reason, and engineering will have a chance to review it as we dive in. But that's one reason that pond here, and this is the latest plan now, and you can see that space there, no lots. But this pond here is right over, is 10 to 11 acres. So the reason there's so much pond in the scale of it is because we're not trying to get the drainage to work. We understand that going up is not a great solution, so we got to go out. To be able to, because of the low, how low the lakes is and kind of making that work. So to get the stormwater and the elevations in the pond work with the outfalls, that's the reason you're seeing these larger ponds. But engineering, and we're diving into that, have started that analysis and actually completed the initial analysis, but we'll dive in more to the engineering. And like I said, the county will look at that as well. But I just wanted to speak to, that's kind of why you're seeing such large ponds is for that reason.
Jake, can you manage the water? Because we have this all over the county, things have been built. And then all of a sudden, there's no, people are getting flooded out. We've got it across in Majestic Oaks right now.
Right.
And, you know, if you can guarantee that the water can be managed, I might be in favor. But, you know, I'm going to go with what Bo said. I just, it's a bog out there. And most of Glen County is.
Right.
No, 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 we're not going to have any comment out of the audience, please. I gave you 15 minutes and we've been about six minutes with questions. I want to give, if there's anybody else in favor
Absolutely.
a chance, but if there's not and you need to finish up, you can.
Okay, I just wanted to say one thing. So I understand how wet, you know, the area is, as it's called out like in the plan here. So 86 acre of this area is a wetland. So we're not going to submit, as an engineering firm that's going to be stamping the plans and submitting to the county, we're not going to submit anything to the county that's going to flood the area. That's just liability on us, it's liability on the owner. And so anything we submit to this county, we're certifying it going to the county. Obviously, if there's issues there, then that's going to be on engineering. And, but just wanted to speak to, like, our company and kind of what we represent, we're not going to make something work and just submit it. We're going to make sure it's done with quality and make sure it's done right.
That's your license, is what it boils down to.
That's right.
Will there be a lot of dirt brought in there?
Well, there's going to be some excavation, obviously. And ideally, the dirt's of quality underneath the muck there of some of those ponds to be able to use, you know, a lot of the dirt on site. But dirt will be necessary for the site.
Okay, I just wonder if it's dirt or gumbug. Because when I, when I put a pool in my backyard eight foot down, I mean, eight foot was solid gumbug.
Yeah, he'll end up getting a geotech done on the site just to verify that.
Okay.
I've got a question. I want to be clear that this lake that y'all are going to be putting in on the already existed and approved zoning is going to improve the drainage for the lakes.
That's right.
So it's going to be improvement and it's not going to be a hindrance.
That's right. And so our initial analysis, we took into consideration the flow that's coming through the lakes, because there is a lot of flow coming through the lakes. So we're having to reroute that. All these ponds are not reroute, we're going to have to manage that. All these ponds are going to be interconnected and ultimately get to the outfall, which does go underneath 82. It gets down to the railroad tracks. From my understanding, the county is working with the railroad on an improvement project for that. So we're going to work hand in hand with the county on making sure that any, anything that they want to improve downstream is only going to help this. I think with the pond sizes that we're proposing and the analysis that we've done, it's going to improve this area alone. Anything additional downstream is just going to provide even more, you know, support for this area. But to answer your question, yes, that pond is going to, is designed to improve the lakes and help their existing drainage issue. That's the only reason the pond is that big.
And along the 1,400-foot buffer between Myers Hill Road and the subdivision where you're showing the wetlands, with what y'all are doing, will that improve any drainage from the Myers Hill residents?
So one reason, you know, in this area here that we wanted to remove these homes is to make sure that there's adequate room to be able to manage any flow that's coming to the site in this area and route it back through. Also, some of the flow in this area goes back and travels back to the south, which, you know, there's some improvements down in this area or some issues down in this area that I think this development will help with as well. But, yeah, any water that is landing on this road, the road's going to have curb and gutter. So it's going to stay within the impervious area routed to the ponds within the development and ultimately out through the site. So there's not going to be any runoff from the site, additional flow going from this entrance coming in. It's all going to be routed and kept within the drainage system and routed back through to these ponds.
Can I ask the fire chief to come up and address the concern that was brought up there? Well, wait, hold on, Vinnie. Is there anybody else who wants to come speak in favor? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing now, Vinnie, I'm sorry. Hey, for the record, I gave Jake 15 minutes, two seconds, and then the commissioner's time was about eight minutes.
I will not be that long, sir.
Thanks, sir.
For the record, Vinnie DeCristofalo, Fire Chief, Glen County Fire Rescue. So the data shows that the Station Six response area, that community, the Exit 29 community, is, continues to be the fourth, fifth, or sixth lowest zone by call volume year over year. The last time I spoke to the community group, the first time I spoke to the community group a year ago, our numbers showed that every day, that station averaged four calls per day. That created seven responses from the fire truck and the ambulance that are stationed there. So adding development in, we then look at a data mark called unit hour utilization, which is how busy are the units on the calls throughout a 24-hour period? We start to look, the fire service looks at when units are approaching the 30% use of a 24-hour period, which is eight hours of use. We start to look at, now we need to add units there. Rescue Six, the ambulance that is stationed there, is at the 11, almost 12% mark as of today, year-to-date today. And the engine is just below 6%. So when the comment is made that Glen County Fire Rescue and Station Six specifically has more capacity for greater volume of calls, that statement will be true for a time period until the development reaches a density. And that community is now becoming, I think the comment earlier was that the residential has a greater impact on services as the development creates more impact onto our services. So as of right now, we're not seeing where we couldn't handle that capacity. Commissioner Clark, I believe, said that, you know, the development throughout, not even this community, but anything else in the area, is going to be phased in year over year. And we will continue to monitor this. But the county has been very proactive of identifying where we need to be for infrastructure as the entire community builds out. So I think we have a good plan going forward over the next years through strategic planning to be prepared for development throughout the county.
Thanks, sir. I just wanted it on record.
Yes, sir.
And I'd also like the chief of police to come up and give an evaluation of what the patrols and the level of protection that we have out at the Exit 29 area.
Certainly. Good evening, commissioners, good evening, everyone. Scott Ebner, Police Chief. Unlike the fire department, we don't respond from a station. We respond from our patrol vehicles. So our zones are calculated and set up based on call volume and the geographical area of the entire county. We actually just increased and added another zone to incorporate where Buc-E's is. Buc-E's could have as many as thousands of individuals at every hour, so we have to accommodate that, just like we would accommodate for growth off Harry Driggers, 99 where more growth is, Offex at 29, and it's based on call volume. So we're able to sustain that now and we're actually building up the department for growth because the county is growing at a substantial rate. So to answer your question in short order, we're well-prepared to handle, you know, the growth there and any other areas of the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other questions, commissioners? All right, I'm going to bring it back to you.
I'm sorry, Alan, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just, if we're at the point of comment.
We are.
Yeah, please. I want to say that Myers Hill is where my wife grew up and you heard from her cousin actually earlier. And we lived out there for a while with my mother-in-law. So I understand how it feels to be out there and be peaceful and to live there. And that's where I'm coming from. However, since I've been serving on this commission, I'm the longest-serving now. And everything that you all say, you're correct. But it's the same thing that people say on the island. It's the same thing that people say in northern part of the county. It is a difficult question to answer for us because you're right in most of the things that you're saying. It's going to be more traffic. And I know Reverend Rice well, consider him family. However, three minutes, six minutes, it's going to increase because the quality of life is nice out there and it attracts people to it. The same thing that happened on the island, and Commissioner Duncan can tell you this. There are houses over there that literally you can almost touch if you stand in between them. And I have no idea why somebody would want to live that close to somebody else. But people want to be that close to the beach or just the island. And being out there, you're right. But for me, the reason why I will support this, but monitor it, is because there are tons of people, I said on another housing board, there are tons of people that are looking for a decent place to live. They're living with relatives. They're, they're living with relatives there, some of them are living on the street. And so we just don't have enough housing. And so I think that the smaller lots makes it more affordable, which is why I asked about the cost than if it was a half acre. I was a part of doing a self-help housing program out there through USDA several years ago, and we built five homes out there. And, and some of the lots required a whole bunch of, of dirt, and we, I think we just got the, the area where it doesn't flood as much in the yards from the area around it. And so the county has to deal with that. We do that every day, that's what the staff does. And, and the commissioners, we, we probably, as Commissioner Clark said, we probably won't be up here when this thing gets built out. But you all need to stay vigilant, your children, your grandchildren, if you pass the property on, to make sure that what the engineer is saying is correct, that it doesn't impact the other areas. But I'm supporting this because we just need a, a lot more housing that's affordable. And I think that this, this project has the opportunity, because USDA provides low-cost financing in that area. And, and, and so the concerns are valid, but we just have to make sure that, that we stay on, you all stay on us, we stay on the staff, and we hold the engineer and the developer accountable. Thank you.
I would like to add to what Commissioner Booker said. I want to thank y'all for being here. I know that, you know, this is, this is hard for y'all. I understand. I'm born and raised out in fancy bluff. I've lived out there for sixty-five years, went, went to school, and I've seen it grow. From when I first was out there, there was, where the fire station is now, there was Miss Bell's store. That was it. Now we have a grocery store, we have two schools, we have restaurants, we have, we have an interstate runs through there now. None of that was there when I, when I grew up out there. So Glen County's growing, and we can't control growth, but we have to manage growth. And that's the problem that we have, and, and you folks that have your half acres and one acres and four acres and seven acres, y'all are blessed. Y'all are blessed to have that, and I'm, I'm so happy for you. Unfortunately, there's other people that don't have that, and it's our job to try to provide adequate areas for these people to live. There's, when I first out, there was never, there wasn't even a subdivision out in our area. Now there's no less than fifteen subdivisions out there now. We're growing. Our last census, we went from seventy-five thousand to eighty-five thousand. We're now over ninety thousand, and within five years, they say we'll be at a hundred thousand. We are not a rural county any longer, and we have not been a rural county for probably twenty-five years since two thousand. So it's our job is to try to manage the, the growth that's coming into it. We can't control it. And we do the best that we can with what is presented to us and how to manage it. And when we see a developer coming in and trying to do one thing or another, we, we, we ask for compensations, and, and a lot of times we get it, and if we can't get it, then we, we try not to, we try not to approve it. But this, in this particular instance, this developer, who I don't think anybody on this commission knows him, he's not from here, has, has been very conscientious of what's going on in our area, and he has made compensations and tried to put buffers in place and tried to put wooded areas between the residence of Myers Hill Road and the, and the other areas, and he's tried to use the, the wetlands as natural buffers. So, you know, I have to say, I have to give him kudos for wanting to do those things. Not many people are, they're, they're usually after the buck. Nobody does this for nothing, and nobody does this to lose money. So, you know, when comments are made that, you know, they're, they're making money, yeah, they're making money. That's what they do for a living. We all, we all, we didn't make money, none of us would be able to survive. But I just want you to know that we're, we're growth. I, I, I'm, I'm a growth commissioner, I believe in growth, I, I like to see growth, I like what we have out there where we live. I love having a grocery store out there that, that's five minutes from my house. I like that. I like having a, a restaurant that I can go to. I, I like having all the wonderful things that, that growth has brought to our area out there. This is just part of it, and, and I understand that some of you don't really want the growth, but there's nothing that we can do about the growth. We just have to, we just have to manage the growth, and I hope that y'all at least understand that part of it. And I want to thank y'all for letting me have my time to, to speak, to speak with y'all.
All right, gentlemen. I think we've talked about this one. So I am going to, Stephanie, could you put motions up, please, ma'am? Commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
I don't know if the motion that I'm looking for is up there, but it's probably going to be one on the, on the bottom. I, I, I can't read it right. I move to approve ZM dash twenty-four dash thirteen as presented with the conditions that in a change in the land use, increased density, street access or alignment, public or common areas, building setbacks, buffers or park spaces such as deemed in substantial changes in the development of the developer, of the, of this district, shall be treated as and required to amend in accordance with the procedures set forth in zoning, in the zoning ordinance. And what I'm saying is, if this developer wants to change anything in what he's asking us here to approve tonight, he's got to come back through the process again, because in a zoning, in a zoning, there's an array of different things that you can do in a, in a zoning. Well, I'm, I'm narrowing that down to, this is what he's asking for, this is what we're approving, and nothing else. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a second to the motion with comments, and my comments is to reinforce that no changes can be made on what we may vote on tonight should it be approved without coming back through the process. And the other is to be in support of workforce housing, of which these additional ninety-five lots will help in Glen County. So often I hear from many constituents that are in business that can't hire people because people can't live in Glen County because the cost of living is so high. A density in this kind of project allows a lower cost entry level for home buyer, and we need more of that. So those are the reasons that I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Did, did you want the addendum?
Yes.
Chairman stated the addendum.
It's included, it's included.
Okay. All right, gentlemen. Mr. Thompson, mo, first motion, second by Commissioner Duncan. All in favor, show of hands. Moving on. Number twelve.
For the record.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Sure.
I've got to read it yet. All right, number twelve, recognizing amendment to the sublease agreement and assignment between the Brunswick-Glen County Development Authority and the, and Regency Innovations. Ms. Winslet?
Yes. Good to be with you again. Glen County Airport Commission, Tara Winslet, Airport Property and Marketing Manager. We bring this item forward to you. Normally, these items are in consent agenda, reason being is because, as you guys are aware, the, the Airport Commission is in an agreement with the Development Authority, and we are in, the, we being the Airport Commission is in an agreement with the Development Authority to manage airport property, and you guys have the ability for thirty days to acknowledge it and either pull it or not. The reason being is for efficiency of government so that we can get to a closing faster, since there's already two boards, the Airport Commission and the Development Authority, that get to review and approve these. So normally it's on your consent to be aware of it. This item has been pulled, so I'm going to present it to you at the Brunswick-Golden Hills Airport. This presented is a sublease assignment and amendment from a previous owner of Steve Pellot for a little over ten thousand square foot parcel with improved infrastructure of a hanger on it to be transferred to Regency Innovations. This assignment, the terms of the agreement will be amended to extend twenty years with a capital development expenditure, part of that being a requirement, and it'll, the other two requirements are bringing it to a current CPI standard, which is an FAA regulation, to make sure that the rental rate going to the Airport Commission is current, as well as the CPI adjustment changes to a table that's more recent. Those are the changes in the agreement, and before you today is the approval of the sublease assignment and amendment as stated.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners? I'll entertain a motion.
Well, before you do, Mr. Chairman, just as a point of clarity, I will be recusing myself from this vote tonight, as, as my son is Regency Innovations and, and party to which this is being assigned.
Okay. I will still entertain a motion, gentlemen.
Is there a motion that we have on the board, by chance?
Just a, a point of understanding, is the motion to adopt the amendment or to approve the amendment?
It's to simply just recognize the assignment.
To recognize the assignment.
Correct. The assignment and amendment, correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer the motion then.
Please.
I'll move that the, the Board of Commission recognize the amendment to the sublease agreement as stated.
Okay.
Properly motioned and seconded, all in favor? We got six oh and one recusal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Number thirteen, consider an adoption of an amendment to the Glen County Ordinance, Article Four, Section Two dash thirteen dash fifty-five, and Section Two dash thirteen dash fifty-six, to clarify and regulate the operation of bikes and e-bikes on county-maintained paths, to authorize the use of Class One and Class Two e-bikes, and to establish operational rules for bikes on paths. Clerks, known on September fourth supporting documentation, we don't need to know all that, but we did, we have added that it will be subject to a speed limit of fifteen miles an hour. Mr. Mumford?
Commissioners, good evening. This, this amendment is something that y'all talked about, you had it at your meeting last, last month, you've had some work session discussions on it, and this is the culmination of, of that, that work, those discussions. We have brought it back to, to y'all, and we've worked on it over the last month. One distinction from the agenda language in what this does, what we've done is, we have removed the classifications between one, two, and three, and just have a general definition for all of them, but it does limit it to fifteen miles an hour or lower. But mainly, just the, the aggregate high-level review, what this does, is that it, it, it specifies that bikes are allowed on your, on your paths. Right now it's silent, there was some confusion of whether it was loud or disallowed, and this, this simply just recognizes that it's been allowed and it is allowed. And that's how this came up originally. It was a question about, are these allowed? So we were clarifying that, and then the e-bikes discussion came on board, and that was added to it. And all this, what this also does is it allows e-bikes to be on the paths, but it sets forth regulations as to how they will be operated, and that's in the ordinance, and we can go through that if you want to, but it's, it's in there, and we've discussed it as well. What we've also added to this is a requirement that anyone who rents e-bikes has to hand out a copy of these, these rules to them. So people who are renting the bikes, maybe visitors may not be aware of the regulations, are aware of those regulations as they're using them. I think also it addresses electric play vehicles, which is another category of, of electric motorized vehicles, but these are like the, the scooters, the little unicycle type of things, but it also limits that to fifteen miles an hour or less. That's the high-level overview of it, and I'm happy to answer questions beyond that, what it does and doesn't do, but that's, that's it.
I also would like to thank our county attorney for working with me. I know I'm the one who asked for this to be continued till we could fine-tune this ordinance a little bit better so that it would be fair for the entire county and not just, basically, but the main problem seems to stem from, or was brought to us by St. Simons, but when we do an ordinance, it's a county-wide ordinance, and we need to make sure that it, it's fair for the entire county, whether it be on North Glen or Exit Twenty-Nine or Blah Island or anywhere else. So I want to thank Attorney Mumford for helping put this together and, and writing orders that, that protects, you know, all the citizens of Glen County. I also would like, hopefully, that with, with our chief of police, Chief Ebner, that, that this ordinance would be taken serious and that we would be able to enforce it. I know it's going to be a difficult challenge for sidewalks and things like that. I may, I may make, make a suggestion that, I know y'all have the little microphones on your, in your cars and your vehicles, so if you see somebody going down the sidewalk without helmet on, for instance, y'all can, y'all can actually just reach out to them that way and say, hey, where's your helmet? You know, something, something that that affects, because I know you don't have personnel at this time to put e-bike, police officers on sidewalks right now, you've got enough to do with what you do already. But I just want to let you know that this is an important ordinance that we, we do take serious. Thank you.
I think, I think the biggest reason for these updates is to make, make the sidewalks safer or the multi-path, you know, if people, if people would be a little more considerate, you might not have to have rules, but we know how that works.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I, for me, I see a lot of it in my district now, and sometimes even the guys on just regular bikes forget that it's not a vehicle, like a car, but it's their vehicle. And sometimes they're riding down the middle of the street. And so, and Sunday, when we had our community outreach in the park, you saw a few of them riding through the park instead of walking it through, and, and that wasn't safe, and I didn't have time to try to, even though we had county police and city police there, I didn't have time to reach out to them. But they forget that it's, it's, it can harm people that are, are just walking. So I would just say, do what you can to help bring attention to it. And, and I think warnings would be appropriate at this, this point in time. Y'all don't need to be barred down with anything beyond that, I think.
And I'd like to piggyback on to that a little bit also, because it's not government's place to parent these kids. That's not our job as, as commissioners or, or government. These, these parents should be teaching their kids to wear your helmet and to, and to obey the rules and obey the ordinances that we do have, and not, and, and not vary from that. And so I, I would like to reach out, hopefully, to, if we could put together some sort of programs where, that the parents are aware of what they need to, how they need to be protecting their children. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd just add that having time to rework this ordinance before it was voted on tonight, I think has improved what we had a few weeks ago. But I think one of the most important things that we're getting across, if it does indeed pass tonight, is that we now have the right-of-way order of pedestrian pedal bike and e-bike, so that there is a precedent to be set in case of an incident, that you can, can actually make a case if one is needed to be made. I think that's important. And then the provision added that we instruct bike rental places to have the instructions printed and acknowledged that the responsibility of, of sharing the... printed and acknowledged that the responsibility of sharing the sidewalk, if you would, the bike path, if you will, is incumbent upon the person that's renting the bike. And we want to try to just emphasize that a little bit more. And unfortunately, as in most ordinances to get passed, it's the actions of a very few that causes you to have to do something such as this. So as Commissioner Tosterson said, I highly encourage some school, school addresses that we could speak to students on, on rules of the road, if you will, and, and try to see if we can increase awareness over time. And I think it's a good ordinance as it sits now, and certainly a good starting place, so highly recommend it.
I have a question for you, Aaron. Does electric play vehicles include the scooters and these one-wheel things?
It does.
Instead of just naming them outright?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion.
Well, I'd like to offer a comment too, Mr. Chairman.
Please, please. Sorry, Bob.
And I'll just hold it to a nickels worth. What I want to offer is that included in our ordinance, it parallels Georgia law for intersection behavior, if you will. And we have a lot of crosswalks, and even many of those have signal, caution signals to alert motorists that there may be a walker crossing that roadway on the crosswalk. I would like to remind all those who ride on a wheeled vehicle, like a bicycle, I have a pedal vehicle, those that are electric or otherwise, that you are to dismount when you come to an intersection and be on foot. If you're not on foot, you're not a pedestrian, and you have no right-of-way. So I would like to reinforce that as a safety precaution to all who are using these wheeled vehicles that are off roadway on the multi-path. So thank you for that. And with that, I'd like to offer a motion, and my motion would be to adopt an amendment to the Glen County Ordinance, Article Four, Section Two dash thirteen dash fifty-five, and Section Two dash thirteen dash fifty-six, to clarify and regulate the operation of bikes and e-bikes on county maintained paths, to authorize the use of Class One and Two e-bikes, and to sta, excuse me, to establish operational rules for bikes on the paths.
Second.
And Commissioners, just to be clear on that, that the amendment before y'all is what you're adopting, as far as the amended, updated, revised, as presented. And just want to make sure that's, which has changed a little bit from the last agenda language, but that's, that's what's before you tonight, which merges all those classifications into one.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Properly motioned and second, all in favor, show your hand. Or no against. All right. Moving on to public comment period, we have Ms. Darlene Schwartz, 106 North Wimber Drive, St. Simons. Ms. Schwartz? Ms. Schwartz not here? Well, in that case, we don't have public comment. Mr. Attorney, do we have need for executive session?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have pending and potential litigation, property acquisition, and personnel.
I'll entertain a motion.
Should we go into executive session?
Second.
Did we need to name those, Aaron?
Executive session.
I do, yeah, that's my preferred.
We get a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion to come out of executive session. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm ready to go home.
But first. Shortest agenda I've seen in a while, and here it is nearly.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve the county attorney's recommendation regarding pending and potential litigation.
All right. Motion is properly motioned in second, all in favor?